Welcome to the debate among three candidate for school board position here in LaPierre County School District. I want to thank you for coming here tonight and we appreciate your attendance. There's a... this issue is important as I've been preaching to the choir if I didn't tell you how important it is in the emphasis that Governor Snyder puts upon any of the right education and I'm on the LaPierre County Community Foundation. And one of the key things that's said at the foundation by futurists, people like Mr. Glazier said that the quality of a community is directly connected to the educational level of people living in that community. Because people with, and I'm not saying they're busy about not having an education, but people that have higher education demand certain things and equality in schools is one of those things. So again, clearly these individuals understand that, that's why they're here tonight. We're going to try to follow kind of a modified rules of the legal voting voters whenever they have one of these debates. And I used to be a member of one of those years ago in LaPierre County had its own chapter. What we've done is we've drawn lots and in order of the lots, Mr. Newt is in both first, Mr. Glazier. Put that eye power, Mr. Cavett is there. And what's going to happen is there's going to be a two-minute opening statement. They can use up to two minutes if they'd like, if they don't, they don't have to. And we're going to start with Mr. Newt, there'll be a two-minute closing statement and we're going to go reverse order. All questions have to be in writing and I have a packet of questions here that have already been submitted to me to help get this thing going. If you have any questions, there's three-by-five card from very nicely given their role, they can still give it to me and we'll move ahead. And when we're, when we'll be asking the questions, the first question is going for to Mr. Newt, please let me respond for two minutes then Mr. Cavett is there. The second question then is going for to Mr. Cavett is there. And that's to Mr. Newt and the third question is there. But that way, the same person doesn't always have to answer first, we find that that's the fairest that it is. And again, as they say in the presidential campaign, please hold your applause until the end. No screaming, yelling, snickering or anything else out there while they're answering their questions. So again, having said that, welcome, welcome candidates. Mr. Newt, did you grab the two-minute to give your two-minute opening?
Hello, good evening, my name is John Newt. I have been an educator in the district for the past 39 years and retired this summer. I'm running for Board of Education because I have a very strong belief in the importance of public education. And I see this as a time of great challenge to public education, a great time of change that's going to be happening. And I think I have, from my 39 years of experience in the district and in education, in a vast number of different ways. Started as an elementary teacher at Elda and Hamley, was an elementary principal for 21 years, taught the junior year for the past 12 years. I coached, have run the high school summer school program, done driver's ed. But the only job I haven't done in the district really is bus driver and superintendent. But other than that, I've had some knowledge of it. I think I've really with that some good experience and insight. And because I've been a resident for most of my 39 years here in LaPierre, I know the community and I have some skills that I think would be best suited for being on the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Cavett.
Well, my name is Bill Cavett. I've been part of the district for 20-some years who live here. I have a son that just, he's a sophomore in college and I have a daughter that's a junior over East. Been a happy believer from the time that my kids were little, but my kids are involved with something that I should help step up and help make it possible. As a result, I've been everything from Cub Master to Girl Scout leader, assistant Girl Scout leader. We've been involved, very honored to be able to be involved with some after-school tutoring programs we started. That in Attica, when we moved into Bay Grove, we had Zimmer in the first year with this building was here. And also I've also been involved with the program over East. I'm a firm believer that people need to be involved, that parents, teachers, need to work together. A little bit of history, my kids went to Attica, it was a smaller group. We had a phenomenal group, anybody that went was involved with that village, we tell you. We had just a phenomenal group of parents, teachers, just great relationships. We had parents that volunteered to help for anything that was done. Growing up in that and seeing my kids in that situation, it just seemed normal. So we kind of got away from there and in this other village it seemed a little unusual. And it wasn't that like that. So knowing that the streams that our district has been under for the last several years and seen some situations, there's things that I'm not necessarily a bit approving of them and I hope to be able to make a difference with that. But I will say that anybody that steps up for this job is a phenomenal hero. It's a thankless job and I appreciate the efforts of everybody who's currently on board and who's been there.
Thank you, Mr. Cavett, is there?
Well, good evening, I'm Wendy Byron, I'm running for school board and I want to thank the district for hosting this event, Judge Delokan, the fellow candidates and discerned that he's attending tonight and cares so much about children. Caring about children is why I'm running for the school board. I've taught children and young adults in LaPierre for 20 years. I'm a Mont College English professor and before that a teacher at North Branch High School. I was a youth group leader, a Sunday school teacher and a big sister in United Way. I also wrote a book about my teaching beliefs that teachers should care deeply about their students. I'm currently on six committees to help children in LaPierre, like Healthy Choices to End Bullying and Drug and Alcohol Use and to make LaPierre schools academically excellent. I've also raised three wonderful daughters and so I think I have a demonstrated commitment to children. Furthermore, I'm the only incumbent. For the past year and a half, I have devoted my time, energy and ideas to make LaPierre schools excellent with an innovative strategic plan and many other ideas. I was appointed unanimously to the board and because of my dedication and experience and passion, I still have the board's unanimous support in this election. Finally, I'm fiscally conservative. I voted for a balanced budget, I voted not to touch our fund balance and I've overseen 11 audits to cut waste and inefficiency and I adhere to many. So I'm asking you to vote for me, you're Governor Six, because I believe I have the dedication, the ideas, the knowledge and the experience to make LaPierre schools excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. First question, and if I have to repeat it, I certainly will. The first question is, could you please briefly describe your educational background, especially any special training or skills that might be useful to you if you're successful become on the school board? Mr. Newt?
Thank you. I have a bachelor's degree majoring in history. I have a master's degree in education. I have 30 hours of education beyond a bachelor's degree. I think probably, that is the most important skill I think I probably have had is working with parents and children for 39 years. My time as an elementary principal, the occasion to work with parents to promote the welfare of the children in the school, to resolve conflicts, to listen, to be able to explain things to people and move the school along in a positive way is very helpful to what a school board member would have to be. I also look at the years of teaching and coaching that I've done. I think it's incredibly important that we do a very, very good job with our children and help our families with children learning as much as they can when they have this opportunity to set goals, to work hard and achieve those goals. So I think I'd be a very good candidate because of those skills.
Thank you, Mr. Cavett, want me to read the question again or?
No, no, that's fine. Well, I am not a mentor here, I've just been very involved with my family. I've been a business owner for 20-some years. Basically, I had to, you know, in order to survive, you have to, you have to know how to work and be a hard worker in order to do that. I will say that in all the things I've been involved in, as far as district spending numbers, I've been in many, many things. The Board was giving a very nice commendation in '09 for volunteer work that I've been doing. And the one thing that is focused for me is, it's about the kids, the bottom line. Everything we do is for the kids. Having to, the opportunities to see some of these kids, see them succeed, see them in the best circumstances and see teachers and parents, people working together. That's why it's called working together, it's collaborating and making a vision happen for kids.
Wendy Byron?
Well, I believe I have a strong educational background and many strengths that would benefit to the students of LaPierre. I have a bachelor's degree in journalism with minors in history and political science from Michigan State University. I have a master's degree from Michigan State University. I earned a seven through 12 teaching certificate through Eastern Michigan University. I studied journalism for a summer at the University of London. I wrote a book about my teaching philosophies. I've been on the board for a year and a half, so I've gained an hour and an extra piece from being, you know, in the trenches for the last year and a half. I have a business background, I was an advertising executive in marketing and advertising in Ann Arbor in Chicago. And of course, I've been an educator for 20 years in a variety of environments. Mont College English professor, a high school history and English teacher, youth group leader in my church, Sunday school teacher. So I believe my educational credentials, my business credentials, you know, and my experience on the board give me many strengths that I can offer to the children of LaPierre.
Thank you. Next question, study of human, Mr. Cavett. Can you tell us what a publicly provided, publicly funded education means to you and your family?
Well, I will tell you that I think we've got some, what we are offering here is a very good example. My son, again, graduated a couple of years ago and gave him his third grade year. We'll go a little prior back, when he started school, we handed him a check, you know, and a lot of it was checked. We were so pleased with the education he was getting when they called us up at the end of his third grade year. We said, look, somebody else, we've got a good thing going here. We, you know, when you have parents and you have teachers, when you've got people working together for the best in the kids and the best effort. You, you know, to me, public education, and you know, some may not agree with it, to me, when you have a situation where you've got parents that are involved, seeing what's going on, when you have teachers who are working hard striving to achieve their positions, their kids in their classes are successful. Going in, a lot of times where it's, you know, they're not getting paid for it, they just do, they just step up and do the right thing. That's what it is to me. Somebody said once that 50% of everything that you learn in life isn't from school. It's not what's taught in school, it's the life and the living that you learn while you're up there in the social actions in school. And we've got, we've got some great things on here. We had, we've been through some tough times, as a player, but I think we've got some very good things.
Wendy Byron?
Well, when I think of a publicly funded education, first I think it needs to be fair. The students across the state and Michigan need to receive the same funding as everyone else so we can have the tools in place to give our students the best possible education. I think we need to provide excellent education for our students. They need to be work-ready, they need to be college-ready, they need to score well in the ACCT because that is a test that gets into college today. So we need excellent assessments, we need excellent teachers and we need people targeted professional development so our teachers can do their very best job. We need in today's world to offer our students choices and innovation and opportunities. We have to compete against cyber schools and we have to compete against harder schools. And so we have to bring our A to A and we have to, what we're doing maybe perhaps isn't quite sufficient anymore. So we have to offer focus schools, specialty schools, maybe online learning and do the best of our ability. And we also, I think in the school district the last year and a half, I helped to innovate a plan like that. It's a four-year strategic plan where we're doing some of these things. Year-round school, virtual learning center focusing on specialty schools where children can get vocational training. So it's all of these things.
Very good, Mr. Newt, do you want me to read the question next, please? Can you please tell us what publicly provided or publicly financed education means to you and your family?
To me, it is, it is the institution that gave me the opportunity to do so much that I wouldn't have had without public education. Grew up in Detroit, school opened so many doors, had the opportunity to move to a suburb high school, so many more opportunities, unbelievable, unbelievable for myself if I hadn't had a good education. I look at historically, it is the thing I believe that has really contributed to our country's great achievements. Public bringing freedom to write, being able to then spread democracy and understanding the needs of democracy and capitalism and good government, oh, it's so incredibly important. The guts and glue, if you will, of our country, held it, held it together. It levels a plane to you, so critical in times of crisis, in times of conflict, in times of challenges we are facing today that children and adults, all of us, keep learning, keep growing, keep striving. And public education is the, is the focal point here that will make, make our society able to overcome the difficulties that we're facing.
Wendy Byron, first question starts with you. Could you please describe any affiliations with churches, social groups, other paternal organizations, including the honors or leadership positions that you may have had that would help you on the school board?
Well, I'm an ordained deacon at First Presbyterian Church. I've been the chairperson of the deacons and that's committed to serving a community with humility and passion. So that's something I've been involved with for many years and a member of First Presbyterian Church for 20 years since I've made a care my home. Through my church, I've been in a variety of positions, in addition to deacon personnel and nominating committee and other Sunday school teacher, youth group director. Right now, I serve on six community committees, two through the Board of Education, teaching, learning and technology, the student advocacy committee, I'm also on the student fund and home committee. I'm an ambassador for the LaPierre Community Resource Center. I'm on the mission committee at my church and I've also joined the Healthy Choices Committee, which is to end bullying and drug and alcohol use in our community. I serve on the refugee, the homeless shelter. I'm an athletic booster at LaPierre West High School and can't think of anything else. That's to be busy.
Thank you, Mr. Newt?
Thank you. I too am a member of the First Presbyterian Church. I am on the Board of Elders. That has really been an interesting opportunity to be able to discuss and listen and propose ideas that contribute to the betterment of our community and that is really all the idea. I've been an assistant voice scout leader. Well, you just, you're glad you smiled when you said this, you know, I've also been, later on, I've been a assistant girl scout leader and I've helped with my police and dogs. So those are the areas that I have.
Mr. Cavett, do you need to repeat or?
No, no, please. I've been involved with, very assertive, we've attended, this helped, I suppose, in my work with their youth group and the different things they were doing. Been involved with several of the committees through the district here. Back was in the planning maybe for both Visiting and Zimmer, Lane Brown worked, served the bond committee that originally put, that we worked at the bond past this building. And in various, various other groups, I worked with some various political organizations around here through communications development, learned to effectively deal with and, you know, communicate and talk to our legislators. I go to Land Street right there to communicate and that's something I would advise anybody, whether you're a staff or a parent. You should make that effort and go, any person, any citizens can go and talk to those if they're lawmakers or lawmakers to anybody. Listen, if I can do it, anybody can.
Thank you. Next question starts with you, Mr. Newt. What do you expect as the amount of time and energy you will have to devote to be an effective school board member and does your current life experience and your schedule, your job allow you to devote that necessary time?
Well, I'm sure it's a lot more time than I am really at this point aware of, but yes, I am prepared to devote whatever it takes. I am, as I said, retired from teaching and so that could be a problem whatsoever. I'm sure there are just so many opportunities as a board member to go out in the community and go to sporting events and go to other school sponsored events and be there to show support, be there to be able to listen to how people are reacting and bring back to board meetings and committee meetings insights. I would have more than enough time, I'm sure.
Mr. Cavett?
Well, I am, I know, only if I know from talking with board members for a lot of years, there's some very, very, very long hours involved. As a standard, I've been attending some of those very long meetings and I will say that I am fully prepared to do whatever it takes. And I don't, there is no, there is no length of time that I won't give for it. It's what it takes, we have to make the work, we have to do whatever is necessary for our kids. I'm a firm believer that our children, they don't assign who they are or how they're brought into this world and as parents and as people, we owe them everything, the only other thing we can do. And it's probably going to mean I'll be stepping back on some of the other, again, I do a lot of the volunteer things and I'll have to, I'm fully prepared to do whatever it takes.
Wendy?
Well, I agree with Phil, with John, that, you know, can you volunteer to be on the Board of Education? It's a serious commitment, it's a priority in your life. You're doing it in service of the children of LaPierre. And so it's a dedication and commitment I take very seriously and it's one I've already demonstrated. I've been on the board for a year and a half and I believe in all of that time I've only missed one school board meeting and that's because my daughter here, Roland Warner, had a school band concert. I've also attended, I believe, almost every committee and I'm on two committees and has built 70 or more hours. And so I think that is why I have the full support of the school board in this election because they have seen that I'm not a committed, I attend every meeting, I attend every committee meeting, I come to these meetings with ideas, with passion, with my energy and I've already demonstrated this dedication and commitment and I share it now.
Thank you. Next question starts with you, Mr. Cavett. How do you plan to separate your role as a board member from your role either as a parent, spouse or grandparent if there is an educational issue with your child, grandchild or spouse or your plantation with any of those individuals?
Well, when you walk into, in our case now, in these days it's, it's the overall building, but when you walk in like in that board meeting, you're a member of the school board. But when you walk into a school, when you're having a parent or your conference, when you're dealing with an issue with your child, that's, that's all, that's, we're all just people. And you have to, I learn over life that you have to, good friends make good neighbors and you have to know your location, you've got to, you've got to separate that. If it's your role as a board member, you have thousands of kids that you're looking out for. Your role as a parent and as father or mother or member, that's your, that's a different role. When you're, when you're looking and dealing with your family, that's something that's, it's sort of your unique and trait.
Wendy?
Well, I've been in this position for the last year and a half and I have two daughters that attend LaPierre schools and a daughter who just graduated from LaPierre schools. So I have them tested in this way. But I think you learn when you're in these positions that you need to be respectful when you're dealing with teachers or you're dealing with administrators, that you have to be respectful of them. You have to be fair, you have to be understanding. But you also don't use your role as a board member to unduly influence anything. You have to have a deep wisdom in your mind that you fulfill different roles in life and that you can separate those, I think, as long as you go into these with the mindset that you're going to be fair, respectful and highly wise in dealing with professionals in this.
Thank you, Mr. Newt?
That's a very good question. Listening to my cohort's answer really has helped me do some remembering of the days when my children were students and I was an elementary principal and how I had to be very judicial and how I sometimes got to listen to their feelings. And you really do have to affirm and separate your role as a parent or as a spouse and as a board member. And there are certain things that as a board member that I'm sure that you have responsibilities to do and others do not have a role of length. And so you just have to be very diligent about that, that it's, that it's business, not personal often. And communicating that probably more to your children, grandchildren, I have one granddaughter in the district and spouse also. So yes, it will be an important, sort of like in an athletic contest, when the whistle blows, the game starts and there are, you know, friends. And when you are a board member, you're a board member, you're not a grandparent or a spouse.
Thank you. Study of human, Wendy? What do you see as the primary role of the LaPierre School District School Board, if you could be specific?
Well, there are very specific roles and then there are some roles that maybe I would add to it. I mean, the first role is obviously to hire an outstanding superintendent, which I believe the previous board did. In addition to having a great superintendent, you have to make sure that that superintendent is doing an effective job year to year. You also have to implement board houses. People who have come before you have created policies that are based on their wisdom, their experiences. So we have a job to implement those policies. But we also have a job to improve upon policies, it's a related document. And so when we see ways to improve our policy or to respond to current realities, then we have that job to do as well. We have a job overseeing the budget and making sure that we're fiscally responsible and we're providing great education and services within our needs. So those are definitely the definition of the role of a school board member. But in addition to that, all of us school board members bring our wisdom, our life experiences and our unique strengths and gifts to the board. And so I think we in our committee meetings and in our conversations try to be visionary. It's not enough to run day to day, but we need to think to the future. The competition in today's world, really creating a school district of excellence. And so while we are very much caught up in the day-to-day and the success of the district, I think it's your responsibility to be always forward-thinking and long-range planning and work to create the most excellent school district going forward.
Thank you.
Many of the things that Wendy just said, I also very much agree with. The area of superintendent, the policy input and that sort of thing, budgetary supervision. and that sort of thing, budgetary supervision, very, all very, very important. I guess I would just add to her list of things, I don't think I've heard her say this, is we are important conduits for input from families, from the community, but we're also important conduits for information coming from the board. I think board members have a very vital role to be sure that they are explaining things when the need is there as to what the board is doing, what the school district is doing. We need to be at events, we need to be seen, we need to take a role as far as support goes for programs. We need to bring back then, as Wendy did say to the board meetings and board committee meetings, our observations, our thoughts and be quite honest about what we're seeing and express our concerns or our, I think, opposite concerns, our things that we're very happy about seeing and obviously continue or to increase even. So that's how I would, I guess, add to what Wendy's list was.
Mr. Gavett?
Well, obviously, you spoke to her both right, it's, you know, hiring a good superintendent, which I feel that, as well, I feel that we've got one of the best ones. And that's your, the board member basically, you hire a good superintendent and you allocate resources that you're giving to the best, for the best outcomes too. That's one thing where I've been, that's one of my main reasons for being in this, because I have some of these things, I don't feel that in the past, we kind of looked for sustainability or long-term viability with some of the things. I look at the amount of money that we have, we put into some of our buildings. People, as board members, you are, you're a trust, you're elected by people and folks elect you to do a job, you can be the best representative possible. And to have any, you know, we may not always be successful, but you know, to at least make sure that we try to maximize the resources that we're given, it's very important and we need to do that. And I think we could have done better in the past, I don't mean to be a negative guy, but we need to evaluate, were we done good, were we done bad, and what we have done, stick, work on that.
Thank you. Next question, Senator Jimenez Newton. What are the current challenges facing education and the school board here in the here?
I would say the number one challenge is economic finance, the money that we have to run our district revenue program. Our budget is very tight. We've lost a number of students from the district, our enrollment has gone down, which translates into a much smaller budget that we have to work with. And that is a really, really major focus point. I think also with the demands on the curriculum and the teaching, that's another important thing that we face, as does every district face, the emphasis on testing and achievement, the world is demanding us to do a better job. We have to do more with less, we have to really, really focus. I think one of the things that we need to work on and to help us achieve that last area is working more effectively with parents. I think the best ally that we have, the best teachers that the children have are parents. And the more that we can do to bring parents into this circle, and that is a hard, hard job to do. And it doesn't happen overnight and it has to, we have to be patient about that. But I think as we get more and more involved in communicating with parents, the incredible importance of their children's education now at this time in their lives and its effect on their lives for the rest of, that will then lead to more and more communication.
Mr. Gavett, same question?
Mr. Newton said you're right, parents, you have to be, you have to bring them in an equation and they have to be a downhearted equation and they have to be, you have to stand shoulder to shoulder, we should have, we should, we should have parents that have been willing to stand shoulder to shoulder with our staff, need to work together. But absolutely, financial stakes are a little bit under, we're dealing with the education pension system, the cost is going up, we're dealing with, you know, less involved, everybody's in town, it's felt that we're all a little leaner than what we're used to. And we have to try to be the best we can, most into the best, protect the job we can for the kids. And again, as we talked before, we need to make sure that we have stability. Any program, whether it's a building, whether it's a program, if we start something, we have to make sure that we're making sure that that goes on. And again, I spoke to six weeks in the building, we had since 2007, in June 2007, we had nine point three million fund balance, we have over three million dollars per day. That's technically, we look, we get our credit rating lower a little bit, that costs more in borrowing. And this district, like every other district, unfortunately, has a lot of money at the start of the year to wait till it hurts to pay the payment. We have to maximize every dollar. It's not a question of being against somebody or wanting to act, but it's reality, right? We have to ensure that every decision we make financially is in the best for the kids. And we have to try to continue reaching out to parents and get them on board and work with them and work with them for the best, you know, for the best it is.
Inspire?
Well, of course, both John and Bill are correct in the challenges that we face. We face declining enrollment and since 2007, we've lost about 1,000 students. You multiply that, per pupil funding of around $7,000, that's a very big decrease in revenue. So we've got declining enrollment, we've got declining revenue, we have increased competition from cyber and charter schools. There are other challenges as well, but those are three big ones. But I think there is good news on the horizon and that we are facing these challenges. You know, speaking to some of the board members' concerns, we have balanced the budget this year. We had a touch to fund equity. We have a goal to increase the fund equity. We've also put in place a four-year strategic plan because the goal has to be to attract families to appear. If we are moving people because we have a low birth rate, but also because people are moving out of the state, then what are we going to do? We can't really sit back on our heels and say, well, all is need. We have to be forward thinking. So the strategic plan is about growing enrollment, attracting families, and becoming a beacon in a state, an excellent school district, which I believe we can do. Someone's made me done already, it's a year-round school. And I have no doubt that that succeed, that it will be a beacon to other people in the area to enroll their children. We're offering the vertical learning center for home schooled children, so they'll have that environment to learn it and it's also revenue for the district. We're also going to be focusing on specialty schools where people can get vocational training, maybe even grant away with a degree. You might even look at partnering with Montalee and seeing how we can develop a program here, possibly an engineering or whatever culture of business. So we need to be forward thinking and I think we are.
Thank you. Kind of playing on that same question, Senator Jimenez Gavett, next question. In these days of dwindling state funding for public schools, how can our district prioritize its needs to make sure that the important elements of our curriculum, such as the language programs, technology, art, and music programs are still being paid and funded?
It's unfortunately, it's, it's a tough call. We have to, as much as, we have to focus the revenue we get on how are our kids going to, what, are they going to go to college? Listen, we've got, we've got a large portion of our kids that don't go to college. And as a, as a family, it's a little bit, pointing out to me that again, in our state, you know, the number one demand, the job in demand is a little bit, you know? There's a lot of things we could be doing and we need to be doing that are going to affect our kids. We need to look what is going to get them disappointed. If they're not employed, they're not going to, they're not going to get married, they're not going to have a family, they're not going to, they're going to miss out on a lot. So we need to do everything we can to get this, working with the kids, working with the families, find out, you know, if, or even going to college. We need to teach to that. I love all the programs, my kids have been in music, my both ladies have been in band, foreign language, we've had a lot of great programs. Hopefully, we can continue that, but I'm, unfortunately, if we don't have, I would rather have my child get an education than get employed than die.
Inspire, we need to repeat or...
Yeah.
Okay. In these days of dwindling state funding for public schools, how can our district prioritize its needs to make sure that the important elements of our curriculum, such as language programs, technology programs, art and music programs are being continued to be funded?
Well, I'll go a little bit, I mean, I think first we need to...
I don't worry.
Oh, first, I think we need to fight for more funding. I know more funding is dwindling, but I think there is money to be found for our district. I mean, first of all, I think the state needs to enter practice of making us borrow money. I think we spend about $125,000 a year because our fiscal year does not line up with the state's year. So that practice needs to come from them. NICSers needs to be reformed, that's a broken system and we need more funding there. We here, school's need fair funding. It's unfair that we would see such a low per pupil funding compared to some of the other districts in the state. So we need to get that in line. I also think that there needs to be more oversight and funding that goes to colleges. You know, public schools have great accountability, but, and I work at a college, I think colleges don't have that same strict accountability. So I think there is more funding for our district, we need to fight for it, that should come our way. That being said, you know, some of the things that we need to prioritize, we need to prioritize professional development. We need to find out what our strengths and weaknesses are in our curriculum, in our programming, in our teaching staff, and provide that part of the professional development so that we can provide an excellent education for all our students, to get our ECTs for them, to make sure that our students are work ready, to make sure our students are college ready, to make sure they have the technology that we need to compete in the world today, but also to have a development of the arts and the specials, music. All of these things attract students toward the district, they develop their special needs, and they help them to get jobs. So all of these things.
Thank you. Senator Newton?
I believe strongly that art, music are incredibly important to a good education. We have to do all we can to preserve those subjects, physical education also. I think we have to maintain a constant vigilance to look at what it is that our young people are going to need to be successful in life in this process of prioritizing. We have to be sure that we're not just adding more and more under the teacher's plate because there's only so much, there's only so many hours a day, so many opportunities for the class to be effectively utilized in reaching those goals. We have to be very, very diligent in things that are no longer needed so much off the plate of the teacher. We have to realize that at schools, there really is only so much that we can do. We have limited budgets, we have limited time. That's why I go back to that paradigm, we've got to employ more and more of parents into our strategy. We have to help them, help their children. We can't do everything. It's been a tendency, unfortunately, over the years with good intentions, to give the impression that we can solve all the problems and we can't. We have only so much that we can do. So let's work together and by working together, we can get a lot more.
Inspire, question starts with you. Can you or should you support a board decision that you would not be favor of? Can you, should you support a board decision that you would not be favor of?
Well, I think you're asking a couple of different things. When I take a vote, I have to vote my condition. I have to evaluate the policy in front of me. I agree with my life experiences, my morality, my ethics, and weigh heavily my decision and stand up for what I believe. But that being said, if I was the lone vote, withholding vote, and everyone else voted, to support a position, then I would have to see the good in that because if everyone else supported something and I didn't, then I would try to reconcile that with my own view, to see the good in why my fellow board members, my respect and I honor them very highly, voted differently than myself and hopefully, within myself, find a reconciliation and to support them going forward and it's a little different.
Senator Newton?
I think, as Wendy does, I have to be very honest to myself and I have to be voting as I see the issue. But as that being said, once discussion is over and vote is taken and the board comes to a decision, then it is my duty, would be my duty as a member of the board to represent that in a positive, supporting manner and not undermine the decision of the majority at all whatsoever. What I think the board members do?
Mr. Gavett?
Absolutely not, I would not vote for something if I didn't believe it's true. And if I didn't believe the people that elected me was, that they, that it was something that they wanted for. Listen, it's simple, we made, we made some oops, we had some mistakes and it's majority rule. It's, four members of the board are here to say, whether or not, we could have a couple of people standing on the floor. Sometimes, you know, sometimes the dissenters in how they speak, it doesn't mean you have to be speaking negatively about decisions made. If I were to be on the board and I were to get out and vote on something, absolutely, if that's for policy, you know, it's my duty, my obligation to implement that in whatever way. But in the process, we're to have a discussion and maybe some things that maybe weren't thought of could be brought to lightening, could be a definite decision we're all, as far as going along with something, just to have a nice pretty good seven on the decision, we're not.
Senator Newton, Senator, do individual board members or the board as a whole have a role to play in the day-to-day operating of the school district? Sure. Do board members, as individuals, or the board as a whole, have a role to play in the day-to-day operation of the school?
Well, I would say the best answer to that would be in an indirect way, they do, but not in a direct way. Board members have the obligation of the public sacred trust to look, see if they, if there are concerns, then address them in appropriate fashion that board members are able to do. But as far as a role, I'm not sure if you're asking this, micromanaging, that should not be the board's role whatsoever. We are, we are outside of daily operation, I guess, how I would see it.
Mr. Gavett?
I actually agree with you, the board members, once the policy is placed, it's administration's job to make that happen. The only thing I would say as far as the daily operation, I guess, every time I go to a board meeting and I hear one of these folks speak about when they go and they read in classes, volunteering, that kind of thing, I think that's pretty cool and I think that sets an example to others. When you're on the board, people, people look to you as leaders, they look to leadership. Reality is, if you're not looking day to day, but you could much, you can do a phenomenal lot of good, make a key man example for somebody else as well.
Inspire?
No, I don't see my role as day-to-day operations and of course, that's why we hire an outstanding superintendent. We entrust our superintendent with day-to-day management, with implementing board policies and administrative regulations. We entrust him day-to-day with educational leadership, with fiscal management, with overseeing... We entrust him day-to-day with educational leadership, with fiscal management, with overseeing the facilities, and the staff, the long-range planning and growth. All of these things our superintendent and our central office leadership team, um, manage day-to-day. Um, however, in the role of the school board, we do have committee meetings, and it's very natural, and we can share our ideas, our concerns, uh, have much deeper conversations. But of course, I think our superintendent's office is always open so that if we have a concern or we have an idea to share, we can call him at any time and, and resolve conflicts or bring ideas to the immediate attention. But at committee levels, uh, is where a lot of that work gets done. Again, they are the top, now, senior superintendent, um, functioning in a role.
Very good. So you, Ms. Gavett, if you had to choose only one area on which the focus over the next six years to move the appear school system forward, what would it be and why? Think about that for a second.
I think I would have to say, we have to work to make sure that our kids, uh, it's technology, it's so prevalent, it's changing so fast. Um, as far as the education, we need to make sure that our kids, um, are versed in that, that, uh, you know, and we need to make sure that we're doing a good job. At the, uh, meeting, Monday, the other day, there was one, uh, uh, the group was working on to be a, uh, a virtual school, uh, and one of the class voices, and, uh, a session came up, and, you know, we need to make sure, again, technology, we've got, we've got computers, we've got equipment that was passed, you know, that was put in three, four, five years ago. How is it going to change? Is it going to affect it four or five years from now? We have to look forward, we have to be visionary and sense, we have to look forward and try to anticipate the needs that we're going to have for our students. Best service, uh, I've got a son who's going to school, he's going to school for technology. I don't care whether you're, uh, you're a brick and mortar place, or you're a builder, or you're, or you're, uh, you're, uh, or, you know, I think he's ever said that, right? We all need technology. Uh, we need to be able to, to do that, you know, we need people that can, the people that can, uh, our kids, their future, and that is the area I think that is going to be probably the most pivotal. Um, obviously, we need to make sure technology cannot replace it for, you know, the good old, good old, our, uh, you know, I just, I think that technology has to be, uh, and, you know, teaching our kids and make sure that they're, uh, well versed in technology and, because whether or not they, uh, they specialize in that, they're going to have to deal with it. I, I go to my kids all the time, running out to something, fortunately, they don't want to help in the old thing, so.
Inspired, again, if you had to choose only one area on which to focus over the next six years to move the school system forward, what would it be and why?
Well, that's very clear to me. We need to focus on academic excellence and program excellence. We need to make sure that our students are graduating with some of the top ACT scores, not only in the state of Michigan, but in the country. We need to make sure that our students are ready for work, if they choose to go on to a vocational field, so we need to provide the opportunities and the options for vocational training. But we also need to make sure that our students are college-ready, that they have the skills needed and the test scores needed to get into the colleges in Michigan and to succeed. So academic excellence and ex, and, uh, excellence in programming and what we're offering for our students, which means, again, we need to innovate, we need to provide options and choices to students. How we used to operate in the past will no longer be sufficient for the future. We need specialty schools, we need students to have options, or maybe they want to get a degree in agricultural business, or information technology, or engineering, or information technology. They need to be able to focus in high school and get a head start. These are some of the things we're talking about with our four-year strategic plan, specialty schools, um, improving our academics, improving our test scores. And this is not only for, uh, the students that we have right now for their future success and job readiness and college readiness, but we need to grow our school district. If we've lost a thousand students in ten years, we need to be a beacon in the state of Michigan that says, this is how you get things done. We want to come to the pier schools, we want to put our family here, we want to take advantage of a virtual learning center, of focused specialty schools, um, of a year-round school, and the many other ideas that we have. Um, so it's crucial, academic excellence, program excellence, those will be the types of things that will attract people to appear and make us a leader in education in our state.
Ms. Nunez, some questions?
Wow, this is not a kindly third in line. Great to question and great answers. Um, and I, I really love what Wendy said. Um, I would go, um, say, uh, this is no different, this is very fascinating. Um, I've kind of alluded to this before, and that is the role of family in children's education. Uh, in, in all the, uh, situations that I have seen myself personally and, and everything I, I've read, uh, I know families are incredibly important to, uh, future, uh, educational achievement level of, of children. They have a very important role to play. Uh, I, I'm sorry to say this, but over, uh, the years, I have somewhat seen that it has been, um, an area that we haven't really paid as much attention to as we should have, and kind of ignored that as a resource for, for us to do more, um, bringing parents in and helping them with, uh, the understanding. The little things that they do can make a tremendous difference in a child's overall, uh, experience in school and achievement level, level. Um, that, that to me, you know, transcends all of these other ideas. We can have the best technology, we can have the highest academic standards, but if we don't bring families into this and help them with taking those steps and, and guiding them early on, early elementary, incredibly important in this area, we, we are really going to be, um, swimming upstream. So we've got to get in there and get parents involved with us in, in all of these.
Inspired, this next question starts with you. If you're fortunate enough to get elected for a six-year term, six years from now, how would you measure your success as a school board member? What could you point, what would you want to point to?
Well, I think there's different ways of measuring success. I mean, I think in today's world, a lot of our success is measured through data. Um, we don't want to just guess at if we're improving. So we really have put them in on the board level. In fact, we put up a new, um, kind of a dashboard in the, um, board building, the boardroom, um, to look at all of our test scores, um, whether it's MME, or the ME, or the ACT, or our, um, budgetary goals, um, so we can see the growth, whether it's in literacy tests, whether it's in internal assessments, so we can really measure and know, are we succeeding in different goals that we've set for ourselves? This has really been a big priority in the board this past year, is having clear goals that we can, uh, get a data point and check and see if we're succeeding. Uh, so that's one measurement, it's a true scientific measurement where we really are taking account of whether we're succeeding or not, where we say we are. Um, but then, of course, you know, there's other ways of measuring. You know, at the end of six years, if I'm elected, if I could look back and see that the pier schools truly are growing, that I can look with pride and say, look at, we have become a beacon in the state of Michigan. People are confident about the pier schools because of what we're doing, because we're innovating, we're doing new things, we're meeting the needs of students today to get them the jobs that they need, um, we're giving them options. Uh, if I could look back and see a, a graduation rate that's outstanding, if I can see that we have increased revenue because we have gone to Lansing, and we have fought for fair funding, and we've used that money for professional development, for more technology. So there's a variety of things that we need to step on, and I hope six years from now, I can say, well done, that we are attracting families to the pier, we're growing and not losing students, and, um, these things that we put in place are succeeding.
Ms. Nunez?
I would point to very similar, uh, sorts of measures of, of achievement, of the very critical, we back to, uh, measure achievement with a, uh, very objective means, test scores, graduation rates, uh, have to, to tell us, they will tell us the story, they'll be very honest with that. Um, I would be so very much after six years, um, happy if, uh, parent involvement in their children's, not just elementary, but middle school and high school programs, uh, were increasing scheduling, that, uh, parents were, were, uh, seeing their children, uh, grow and become the, the, uh, young, uh, adults that they would always dream that they would be. Um, people moving into the community, uh, appear being, uh, talked about, uh, throughout much, they can as an example of how a community can come together and face a challenge and overcome it and, um, bring in new ideas, new ideas from, from people, bring in, uh, and opportunities, new opportunities for, for children. Bill was talking about the need for welders, uh, I, I think there's an incredible opportunity there for us now to look at, uh, trade school sorts of occupations, uh, that we can then help children build towards. And, and I think that will call us, that we have wonderful parents involved, uh, there who should, their knowledge and experience, and, and help us with, with their children's growth.
Ms. Gavett?
Well, in six years, uh, if I were to look back, I'm fortunate enough, I'm lucky enough to, uh, around the board, if I were to look back, you know, you're absolutely right, these, both these folks are absolutely right, you want to make sure that your, you know, your graduation rates are improving, everything's improving. Unfortunately, the reality is, we really haven't the last few years, and we need to, we need to focus harder, we need to do everything we can, we need to, uh, we need to be trained, not stay flat, we need to work, strike, and train up. Um, we also need to make sure that, uh, again, when we're, when we're making decisions, we look at viability, long-term viability for something. Uh, when we were, just to finish, one of, one of my two things is, we were voted in trust for, for a foundation, you know, millions of dollars, it's been between safety fund and, and, uh, the bonds we put in the buildings, but we didn't have an idle fund. We could have done better, we had things that, we had student enrollment projected that we were, we didn't necessarily look at them as hard as we should. I'm not saying anybody's fault, they have it, but we can do better. Anything that we do, I think, whether it's a, uh, a class that we're offering, whether it's a, uh, a building, whether it's a program, if, if, if in six years, if some of the same things, if the first year we've got some programs, some things that we're doing, if they're still succeeding, that you know, that's secure, I'm going to figure that's plus. Uh, we had, uh, it was very, last night I think I got called, uh, there was a dance over in Lynch, a little, little DJ working, uh, they called me up and, and, uh, I was in there and there was several, probably two hundred, two hundred and fifty, moms, dads, kids, and, and Lynch Elementary, and they were having a holiday weekend, so I was like, tell you, that's where you got moms, dads, kids, parents, teachers, everybody working together.
Thank you. Next question, Ms. Nunez. What do you understand is the role of the superintendent in the district, and what would you do to measure the bid of her effectiveness?
Uh, yeah, I have two on that one, very, very good. I'm sure I have, um, no full understanding of all the responsibilities, uh, and you say leadership is pretty generalized, um, but, um, that is exactly what a superintendent is, all about leadership, all about, uh, taking this diverse group of people, um, employees as well as children and families, and getting them all on the same, uh, same track, uh, working together. A role of superintendent, I think, uh, with leadership has to do with, um, setting examples, uh, listening to people, uh, communicating very effectively with people, um, trying to take all of the information that they have concerning state funding and, and curriculum innovation and, and needs and demands, and synthesize it into a understandable program, a vision, if you will, uh, superintendent has to have a vision, uh, and, and be able to lead the way.
Ms. Gavett?
Uh, I, again, it's great, uh, great, I'm, I'm, it's actually correct, it, first of all, the CEO, I mean, he's not a lineman, uh, he's CEO of the 59th Dollar Corporation. Uh, you know, he does with CEO, the page is going to have to, uh, and has been willing, because I understand, to sit down for, uh, for Ellen, if it's something like that, um, he has to oversee major communications, good communication between staff, between parents. Uh, he has, there's, I'm sure, I'm sure there's a plot that, uh, it's probably the, uh, age of all that he's got to do, um, and, and even that is probably short, but basically, he is not only the, the, you know, the head of our district, he's the, the figurative head of our district, he, uh, he will let the number one person to work through leadership, he goes in a classroom, uh, and the kids see him in there, um, it's, not only is it, of course, he's in there for other things, he's been looking, and, um, the kids see that as something there, it's, wow, superintendent of my class, you know, he's a, he can be motivated for us, uh, or he can be wherever it might be, um, it's all part of leadership. But, you know, it's all the CEO, I think, half-lead leader, strong leader with a vision, and, and being willing to articulate that vision, and, uh, and be willing to put it out there. It may not, may not work, maybe, you know, he's, might be a little risque, may put it out, and other people not necessarily like it, but he's willing to lead, and that's what I think it is.
Inspired?
Well, the superintendent has many roles and responsibilities, and I think it's important for a board member to know what all those roles and responsibilities are, because we are trusted with evaluating that person, see if they're letting up to it. Um, the superintendent has very specific roles, he has to put in place, he would see a highly effective academic program and curriculum and services, um, for all students, um, the quietly impaired, the learning disabled, and all groups of students in our schools. Um, he has to provide a safe and healthy environment for our children, he has to oversee the day-to-day management of the district, he has to implement the board policies and administrative regulations and state policies and legislation, and keep up today now with that. He also needs to represent us on a state level. Uh, he has to provide the educational leadership as he oversees the central office leadership team. So, you know, he is the one that's overseeing, um, the decision-making when it comes to educational, uh, leadership and academic excellence. Uh, as the gentleman has said, he needs to be a district communicator, he has to communicate with businesses in the district, with parent groups, um, with the board, so he has responsibility to not only communicate, but to listen and to learn and grow from his conversations. Uh, he has to oversee the annual budget, are we living within our needs, are we using our money effectively, cutting out waste and inefficiency? Uh, he has to oversee all the facilities of the district, and their upgrades, and their improvements, and that they're safe and functioning. Um, but as this gentleman mentioned, ultimately, he really has to all focus on long-range planning and growth, he has to be a visionary person, uh, that's a long, longer list of responsibilities, but at the end of the day, he has to take us forward. He not only has to accomplish all of those things effectively, but he has to tell us how we're going to grow and fly and innovate in the future. And we are evaluating a variety of ways, and we have techniques to do that, the board and, uh, administrative staff.
Next question, Ms. Gavett. Basically, government, neither has come to many governmental entities that have been subjecting, consolidating, consolidating services, consolidating districts possibly, are local school boards necessary, or should they are thoroughly, we use the word activated, but use the word taken over by the state or another entity?
No, I, I'm, I'm a very strong pro of, uh, of local schools. I'm not necessarily the biggest fan of the board. Uh, I don't like the dicks from, from a pie. I believe that, uh, they, you know, some folks may not agree that, uh, when we send our kids to school, we want to have somebody, we want to know in our local folks, uh, our local organization has a handle on what's going on in class. Um, you know, there's, there's an issue in school, do I want to go, you know, out to some other group outside my area that is, 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 deal with the problem? No. So I am, I am, I am not, not a supporter of, uh, that type of consolidation at all. Having said that, I would say that the pier comparison with some of the other districts, with smaller districts around, um, the pier has choice. If you have, if you do have some, uh, some numbers, you can offer some choices, some of the smaller schools that may be struggling a little more don't have, and, um, I, I get, I see both sides, I've got family that's involved in smaller districts, um, they, they love their districts, but I know that some of the choices that we have, that my kids, their parents- They love their districts, but I know that some of the choices that we have, that my kids, their path, available to them up here are something that they don't. And so, in that sense, I do, you know, if you've got, let's say, every district of 300, it's harder to deal with everything than it is in a district of 5, 6, 7,000. But again, having said that, it's hard to hit the goal, that actually should always be remaining local order.
Mr. Gervais?
Well, I agree 100% with Bill. I think we need local control. We have the local understanding. I mean, the people that live in this committee, that attend the committee, that turn all the various functions over here are in the best position to understand our local issues, our local needs. You live in Lynch County, you understand the needs that are pressing upon us. Our high poverty rate, our high unemployment rate, our high foreclosure rate. Nobody else is going to understand or feel as strongly the impact of these issues as somebody that's living in this district, is talking to community members on a day basis. We are in the best position to know these things. But we're also in the best position to advocate for ourselves. When you have a vested interest, because it affects you, your children, your family, your neighbor, your coworkers, you're going to fight harder to advocate for what you need in your district. Getting it up to a city control where people that live outside of our district who have the function of looking over everyone will certainly not have our need at the forefront. We wouldn't be the priority, and we need to advocate for our own.
Mr. Gervais?
I am very much in agreement with my public teachers today. I am very much against losing our local control in the local school board. I think it's critical, critical to public education. Again, as I said about in St. Louis, it's the foundation of our nation. We have got to maintain this opportunity here in our locality, up here, covering communities, up here community schools of district, the necessary control and the ability to determine path that we are going to go. Certainly, I understand the role that governor and the legislature has to set some direction, but ultimately, it really has to be here determined. Otherwise, we will really suffer some negative consequences, I believe. Now, I think the governor is somewhat alluding to the opportunity to have some shared services, to eliminate duplication of three districts. And that's, I think, a very good idea, and I think many districts are working towards that, showing the role of services and other such administrative tasks. As far as the control of curriculum and the control of direction of the district, that has to be a school board and a community decision.
Mr. Gervais, next question to you. Do you think the bargaining units, as represented by various student unions, are a hindrance or an asset to the up here community schools and why?
Well, we're not only an asset. Education is a people business, and the staff is our strength. When you look at the daily life of a student, finding a great facility and keeping the schools clean, having food service workers who keep the food safe, having paracels are helping students with cognitive learning disabled, having great teachers. This is what education is all about, is having a great staff. And the bargaining process is one that brings everyone together. It's not an easy process, it's not, it's a challenging process, it's a frustrating process. But what would we rather have? Would we rather have people dictating everyone else? You know, this is the way it's going to be on, and we believe we've set a democratic ideal that we have faith in our fellow communities, that everybody comes together, and they share their ideas, and they share their wants, and there's a fighting and competition, they're competing in the context of ideas. And then ultimately, we bargain something that's in the best interest, hopefully, of all of us, at least given the current realities. So I definitely think they are assets, that the people that make up our district are our strength. We're the people that get the job done part of the day. And with their collective minds and energies and passions and ideas, all of us working together, we come up with the best possible contracts and working conditions for our forty of our students.
Mr. Gervais?
Our bargaining units, I truly believe, are a great asset to our district. The old saying, it comes to money, money, two hits are better than one. The more info we can get, the better. Certainly, it's not easy to have to go through negotiations in that process. It's not often really easy. It is a real challenge to get consensus and agreement. But by not the other side, the other side of that coin, not having bargaining units, not being able to have that opportunity to have discussions, I think we'd be just down the trail of great trouble. I think the old adage that I know as a music teacher, I'm trying to drum into my students, power tends to corrupt, absolute power corrupts absolutely. And you take away bargaining units and their role in this issue, I'm sorry, but all of us will be the worst for it because none of us know all these, and together we will find improvement.
Mr. Gervais, next question to you.
Well, I've never had a bargaining one. I have had some great ones. Our district is made up of people. People are important. Our kids are more important. We're going to work in the business of education for our kids. There is no more high priority presence than our kids and as people, absolutely. We need to be dealt fairly. I'm not, you know, opposed to them whatsoever. But I tend to take away a lot of caution when we start talking about groups, bargaining units. If you know a little what they do, and know a good bargaining unit, you're cheap, I don't see it. But I want to introduce people, we've got hundreds of them, phenomenal people, they're great leaders. But as far, and again, people are important, the people in a district are what makes difference, not bargaining.
Mr. Gervais, next question to you. What do you understand the role of the ISD, the intermediate school district is, and we support that role?
Well, historically, the ISD is a governmental unit, so to speak, of local schools that you expect, that work through their offices in a number of ways. In the old days, it was mainly media, special ed services, that sort of thing that the ISD can do better in a larger scale. I think recently, the ISDs now have undertaken responsibility in helping screen for future candidates for jobs from teachers, I imagine, superintendents. And that's a very good way to avoid duplication, a very important way. I am really not sure at this point what more or different than the goals of the ISD has, but certainly if they are helping save local districts time and energy and money, they have an important role.
Mr. Gervais?
Well, I have been, had been involved in the ISD other than just hearing a little bit of the folks. Growing up in Elkhorn County, we had four different, we had four of our county. And we would go, we would go take classes that weren't generally, couldn't take, get our attention. And it's my understanding that still, that still goes on. That's why, if there's a role of a class, if there's something that they need to teach that we don't have, we need to give up choices, we need to give up giving the best options to our kids. And that's, again, I don't know enough about them to be, you know, saying more about them other than, you know, we just need to, we need to work together. My idea to taking some ASD classes out there, that when you're little, there are a lot of outdoor classes and some for kids, and I know they enjoy that dimension, but the part of high schools and where they're at, I have them on the curriculum.
Mr. Gervais?
Well, it's my understanding of the intermediate school district, as John said, is a government unit that provides services to all the schools in the county, that provides services for students and their families who are autistic, cognitively impaired, learning disabled, speech impaired, and a variety of other challenges to their learning. I know a few people who work with the ISD, one of my very best friends works with the ISD. And it offers a lot of great services. It can be very helpful. It provides services to help keep us in our district, and maybe having children with disabilities who have special needs. So I think it's a great institution, but it's been an institution that's been in place for quite a while. And I think really, the world today, everything is under the microscope. It's a matter of looking at all the government institutions and seeing, how can you make them run better? Is there waste? Is there inefficiency? Is there duplicate efforts? Is there people they have on staff that we have on staff? So I think really, moving forward, it's a great idea, and there's great people there, and they provide wonderful services. But I think we need to work together to say, you know, is there ways to improve our relationship? Is there ways to cut waste inefficiency, and do a better job for the children up here?
Next question to you, Mr. Gervais. Do you believe students across the up here community school district have equal access to quality education in our schools, and what if we think should be done differently?
Well, like Wendy said, I'm kind of troubled with, you know, in this country, we're founded on the premise of the world. We have some odd districts that are old premises. These are old overs from the day it was laid. And some of these districts still have the option charge, and they have its own additional badge on their school. We don't have that option. I've spoken to legislators before, I'm sure all of you have, for them to have people, truly make equal. Or go, I believe that a law is either make everybody live under, or nobody should live. When you apply a law such as proposed way to some districts and not to other, I have a problem with that. It's not a question of, do I think we should go up or they should come down? It just needs to be, you know, laws are, I can't be bored there for everybody. Having said that, that would be my biggest obstacle. I know a lot of folks in different areas of the state. And it's, I mean, you got a district, it's very difficult for a district to appear or in a district that's in Lynch County, we're all fine. And it's, when you're dealing on a budget of 7,000, it's kind of 7,000 for good, as opposed to, you know, 12, 13, 14. I'm sure if we asked our administration or our teachers, could they do something more good than that? I'm sure they could, and I'm sure they'd absolutely impact where our score is going to be. The reality is, at this point, we're not there, and our latest legislation hasn't gone yet. We need to urge them to do that, and do it in a positive way. And again, we need to stick up. For a long time, our board didn't want to make employee pay. And so now, I mean, they have to make minimum salary.
Mr. Gervais?
Well, much of what Bill has to say, I mean, it's really cautious that our students see the point in what they do. You know, here, up here, her people funding $6,966. The state of Michigan averaged $7,138, so we're below the state average. And of course, there are some districts in Michigan where the students are receiving $11,000 to $12,000 per student. And from my research, the national average is $11,467 per student. We're paying $6,900. So no, we do not have equal access. We do not have equal funding. This is the money that can be used for professional development, for technology, for all these upgrades that give our students maybe more fair education and that access. So I think Bill is right, and we need to fight harder at the state level to make these reforms. Again, it's ridiculous that we have to borrow money every year to the tune of $125,000 interest that we pay to pay our bills, but the state won't reform that. That needs to be done. We also like to just mention, talk about looking at the whole ISD system. Is there money that could be saved in reforming that system? We need to look at reforming mixers. At the state level, they need to concentrate on looking at ways to inefficiency. You know, they're asking local districts to consolidate, to save money, to cut out waste inefficiency. But yet, I'm not sure that they are applying that same razor-sharp focus on many districts at the state level. And I'd also like to see there be more accountability of money that was taken away from schools and has gone to colleges. Are they under the same microscope as public schools? So no, the access is not fair, and that needs to change.
Mr. Gervais?
I would say at the district level, the access equality education opportunity is pretty equal, pretty fair. Looking back, it hints to you that wasn't always the case because of the different buildings that we had, but since the village paths and improvements have been made, I would say pretty much over that is. Well, like my cohorts up here, I agree that the state has really perpetuated a situation of unequalty. I kind of, I kind of know who they're, they're familiar with. And I'm thinking about that. This is bigger than any one representative of our government. It's an attitude that has been around for a while that, I remember back in those days when they switched from the property tax to the state formula to pay with sales tax. The thought was, well, that's where community was, and, you know, after all, money really doesn't make a difference. Well, plug on, money does make a difference. It's very hard to compete with districts that are spending 25, 30, 50% more than we are able to spend on their students, and that needs to change. I don't want to bring men down, I want to bring us up. And I would urge all members of up here community schools, parents, staff, to do all they can to communicate that interest with the legislature and the government, because someday that has got to change.
This is going to be the last question, one sec, I'll just bear, we'll go through, and then one second, I'm just there. You have two minutes for your, three minutes, you want that much time? Children are working ahead of you, it's, it's waiting out there, or either that, or people were helping us or something. And again, it's about seven, three times, why should I have any good time going, going? This is our last question, and it could be for everybody. What are the leadership responsibilities of an individual school board member, and how will we, lead by example, make this district better?
Well, I think there are a variety of characteristics that a school, good school board member should have. I mean, number one, if you want this job, if you're not compensated, it's a demanding job. It takes a lot of time and passion and energy. So you've got to have a true commitment and dedication in your heart for the children up here. Four, moving a district forward, to championing it at the state level, you've just got to be dedicated. You have to be someone that attends all of the meetings and all of the committee meetings. And when you come to those meetings, you don't just come and listen, you come and are prepared, you read on your own, you read and you learn, you research, you bring ideas to those meetings and your concerns. You have to be ready to participate and contribute in any meeting that you're at and to move it forward. You have to be constantly learning. You know, I'm a college teacher, and I teach my students constantly, but I'm learning as well. They're a student of life, they never stop learning, reading about what other school districts are doing, how they're improving, what options are offered, what innovations they're implementing. So we have to kind of constantly learn and challenge ourselves. You have to be a listener. You can't go into every meeting like you know everything, that it's something I heard. You have to go in and you have to listen to other points of view, and listen to the community, and listen to teachers, and listen to other board members. You have to have your own convictions, but you have to be flexible and willing to move your thinking sometimes. But when you listen to other people and their ideas, they have to hear it, and you have to be open to change. But I also believe that you need education, and you need the experience, which I have. I have a strong educational background, a strong work experience, and I have been on the board for a year and a half. Learning and challenging yourself and contributing.
Thank you. Mr. Gervais?
Mr. Gervais, you said it so well and so thoroughly. I agree with your whole heart, being a board member is going to require commitment, dedication, tremendous amounts. They have to be prepared, they have to be there. You have to be prepared, you have to be there and be prepared, I have no doubt. Willingness to learn, to listen, to grow. Board members do not know it all, never will know it all, but they have the attitude of, so may I therefore have the attitude that I'm going to listen, I'm going to learn, I'm going to learn what you're going to think. Honestly, it's an incredible, I think, responsibility for a board member to be honest with fellow board members, and to be honest with the administration, and to be honest with parents, community members, and share, willing to share your conviction and the thoughts and your ideas. And then be supportive of once decisions are made and the course has been set, then you're behind whatever is presented. And that's a critical aspect. You can't be stirring the pot behind the scenes and causing difficulties. No, we're in it together, the decision's been made, it's not what I wanted, but that's all right, we're going this way, and that's good. Respect, you have to be respectful to the school, district, to the parents, the children, the staff. You have to see this as bigger than any one of us, bigger by five.
Next question.
Well, you have to be, well, lots of qualities, but you've got to be, you have to be honest, you've got to be honest, you've got to be forthright, you have to be willing to speak to my name. You also have to be willing to research and, I'm not sure any different board would probably really be this, from what I can, you have to be a little bit agree with some. Our kids are worth it. We have to, we have to dig, we have to dawdle. When you're looking at making a decision, I don't know whether the ability or program, you need to ask, not to be the limestone turd, you need to ask, oh, how's this going to pack? Long-term, what does this mean? How is, how are kids going to be successful with this? You need to ask those questions, and you need to not stop. If you don't get an answer, you need to put it until you get an answer to the question's properly answered. You need to be accountable. Bottom line is, we're accountable, we're voted in by the voters and the parents and the pastors of all the community schools. It's trust. We need to be accountable. Somebody's got a question about why some, why you didn't pay me, but why you invited to go to this, you know what? You should say, well, this is why I support this, or this is why I did it. You should absolutely make sure that you are always accountable to people. And you should never be willing to forgive the past. You have to reevaluate yourself. You've got to, okay, if we made a decision, if it wasn't the best decision, how do we make it better? How do we not do it next time? And that's where we need to focus. And we need to make sure that every decision we make should absolutely, first, foremost, and that, they have to be taken account for anything else.
Close your state, Mr. Bear. Three minutes.
I've got to get all my remarks in front of you. First, I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight and listening to my views. I'd like to thank my fellow candidates. I am privileged and honored to be among all of you, the caring residents of LaPierre. I am asking for your vote because I believe that I have the most strengths to benefit the students of LaPierre. I have spent most of my life caring for children and young adults. I have taught English at Mont College for over a decade, and English and History at North Branch High School. I've been a youth group leader, Sunday school teacher, big sister in United Way, and a foreign exchange student host. I am an athletic booster and have climbed the bleachers for the fifty-fifty more times than I can count. Through my own efforts, one high school has a new scoreboard, and the softball field will be safer. I even organized the staff breakfast because hard work should be rewarded. And I dedicated two years of my life to writing a book about how students should be treated with love and care and why that's so vital. I also serve the residents of LaPierre. I volunteer for the refuge, homeless shelter, and serve on six committees: teaching, learning, and technology, student advocacy, healthy choices, the South African Student Loan Fund, the LaPierre Community Resource Center, and the mission committee at my church. Also, I am only incumbent. Being a current school board member means that I have the most experience and knowledge. Learning all there is to being a school board member is a challenging and time-consuming process, and I have gone through that process, and I'm in the best position to make immediate contributions. Also, I was appointed unanimously by the school board a year and a half ago, and today, I continue to have the full support of every single board member. I also am financially conservative. We have conducted eleven audits to cut waste and inefficiency. We implemented an energy program that is saving thousands. We reorganized our administration to save money and have taken a ten percent pay cut. We took the difficult path of asking employees for a shared sacrifice, and we have closed under the paths of the schools and are consolidating our schools. But most importantly, we have balanced our budget, and we have not cut our fund balance. And our goal is to increase it to ten percent. All of this is good, but it's not fun. We need to create a district that is excellent in academics and program and innovation, a year-round school, virtual learning academy, specialty programs, vocational training. What we were in the past is not sufficient for the future. We need imagination and innovation to fuel our growth. I am the person that can provide that. Thank you.
Time perfectly, Ms. Bear. We're going to start on the bottom. Ms. Cabot, please.
Well, I've been part of the community for twenty-something years, no regrets. I feel with the choices that we've done for my kids. They've gotten an excellent education, and I've got very successful students. And I couldn't be more proud of them and proud of what we've accomplished as a district. I do believe, though, that we've missed the mark on some things. We have, you know, we've got some issues, we've got some challenges to lie ahead, and we need to, we need to interpret it. We have, well, five of the last six years, we've had, we've got going fund balance due to shore up. That's unacceptable. If I'm voted on the board, I won't, I will not vote for a budget if we have to get out of fund balance. I don't believe that fund balance is touched unless there's a significant or substantial emergency. That's just my, I don't believe that we should, we should overlook what we've done in the past. We've got, we need to count the money, six point three million dollars that we've taken from fund balance for the last few years. We tie that into almost three million dollars that we have down closed buildings in elementary level. We're talking about reorganizing and multiple closure requests. We put labs in there. We obviously, we missed the mark, and we should do a better job evaluating the long-term sustainability of where, where, where our resources. They're not our resources, they're not yours, they're not mine, they're our children's. And we need to keep that in mind. And we look at, not to shake, to say shame on you or to criticize anybody, but to look at that and see how can we do better. We need to make sure that we have the most informed, our board is the most informed it can be, whether or not we're certain, our first attempt, or whether we have somebody else, and a different board. We need to make sure that this area is, and that we're always looking for the state's, the long-term sustainability of everything we're doing. I ask for your vote because I believe that they come up short. And I will tell you that all my efforts, from, you know, football coach, vans, anything that I've done, I've been volunteering for a long time, been on district path for six years now, been on the East, the parent, teacher, parent advisory committee, made the road, parent advisory committee. It's all about people, it's all about kids, it's all about working together. And I know the more that we can work together and to help our kids succeed, we better and the finer the more, the finer the days of the term are rolling. And so I ask for your vote, and I thank everyone for being here and for the money that I made. So, anything?
Ms. Bear, give a last word.
Wow, great, awesome responsibility. Very nice listening to you, my fellow candidates, in their concluding statements. They're both funny people. And I know they both would be very, very good school board members. I think I make a very good school board member, too. And again, from my own conclusion statement, I believe there is an asset to have somebody who has the knowledge level that I have of our district, of the past, of what we've done, what we've tried, what's worked, what hasn't worked, the community, the feelings, the attitudes, the ideas of the community. I'm, I've been blessed with that sort of experience to do, to know those things. And I think I could bring to board education a lot of information that will help make good decisions, so that, you know, we don't make mistakes, mistakes can be made, they are made in any organization. But you have to then rise above and go on and learn from your mistakes. And I think I could be a very big asset to the board if I were on the board. So I guess, you know, I'll make it short this week. If you feel that that is something that you agree with, I will go vote for you. Thank you very much.
I want to thank the candidates, and I want to thank the people that are out there watching. Hopefully, access to video to be on full circuit of some station somewhere, if somebody can see that. And I have some people who work in LaPierre, but they live in Utica, and they sent me to Eisenhower High School, and I'm saying, why don't you come up here? And one of the biggest things they tell me is, they don't believe in the educational quality we have up here. I think if that person was here and saw the passion that these people have for education in LaPierre, that would change that person's mind. But I would say, these, hopefully, future board members, against future board members, no matter where they are, their goals are worthy goals that should be accomplished. So as I say to all people, further lead, go out, and board hold them. Thank you very much.